To get started, please.
We're not breaking in any young people.
No.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Goffstown Book Planning Board meeting. Meeting is scheduled for tonight. It's a regular Thursday night meeting. As usual, we begin with our call of members that are present. We'll start with Joanne.
Joanne Duffy, Planning and Economic Development Director.
Colas Adams, Select Board Representative.
Galabrig, Alternate and Recording Secretary.
Tim Redmond.
My name is Barbara Griffin.
I'm Jim Raymond.
David Pierce, Northern Member.
And from DPW Engineering?
Scott Ozanah.
Thank you, Scott. First order of business, as usual, is minutes from our prior meeting of April the 28th. Are we ready to take action on them this evening?
I may lose the approve.
Motion to approve by Jim?
Second.
And by Barbara. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It passes. Yes, I will. Thank you for that. Dale and David will be voting in all matters tonight, since we are down several board members tonight.
And as you know, I have to recuse myself from the first item.
What's your reason for recusing yourself, Tim?
We represent one of the condo union owners. Yeah, you see, union owner.
He's stepped down from his before.
You have to step down, please.
Yeah. Thank you.
If you'd like to step down, then we'll accept your...
If you're ready to go.
We are going to get started. We have...I'll make a public statement. They're going to be line striping the main road out here, beginning at 9:00 tonight. So, we are going to ask our applicants to be speedy and get through their applications as quickly as they can. And we will try to get ourselves out of here by 9:00 o'clock, which is what my goal is going to be for this evening. So, Jim, you can step down, sir. Joanne, our first application is Abingdon Place Condominium Lead Development, map 18, Lot 60. Could you run it for us, please?
Yes. They were here about a month ago, and the application was found complete. However, there were several items that we needed further information on. So, the plan itself really hasn't changed. They've addressed some of the issues that we had brought up at the last meeting. And so, basically, we're here with the First Amendment to that original submittal. They have no waiver requests, but they do need a conditional use permit in order to allow the drive-through. So, the drive-through is not allowed in that zone without a conditional use permit.
Was the conditional use permit waiver asked for at the first hearing?
No. They have no waivers that they're asking for, but they do need a conditional use permit.
Okay.
They're not asking for a waiver for that. I don't really think that you can.
And was the first...was that a regular scheduling meeting for them, or was that a conceptual meeting?
That was a regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, thank you.
However, staff had told them in advance that we were not recommending approval that evening due to the fact that there were outstanding issues. So, we have received revised plans from the last set of plans that you had. We have more comments, I guess you'd say additional comments, from what was initially told to them. Some of it has to do, or a lot of it, has to do with the traffic report. We did receive, and you should have in your packet, a review from VHB. It's quite lengthy on the traffic report that was submitted by TF Moran originally in the first packet. So, Scott will go over that information with you. He's been working with VHB on this for about a month now. And the other item that has caused some concern are the architectural renderings that have been submitted as part of the packet. There is a criteria in the conditional use permit that the building fit in with the neighborhood. I have included photographs of the current Franklin Savings Bank, as well as the Rite Aid and the architectural style is basically New Englandish. And also, I've included pictures of what you've seen as a typical Starbucks structure, and below that is the proposed structure. They have changed it slightly, I believe, since their last meeting, but they can certainly go over that with you. We did receive an updated lighting plan. I have concerns because the abutting apartments will have clear view of the backside of this development. They are going to put up a six-inch-high vinyl fence, as required by the zoning ordinance.
Six inch?
Six foot.
I'm sorry. Six foot.
We got it. We knew what you meant.
And they have added some landscaping trees, which, at planting, are two-and-a-half-inch caliber. So, they can go over the landscaping plan. The other items...oh, one item that we failed to do at the last meeting was ask the applicant to waive the 65-day clock.
We have it.
So, I'd recommend that that occurred this evening. The fire department had some concerns about the drive-through sign and whether the firetruck could fit through the drive-through, but Scott has further information on that. It seems to be that they've changed one sheet to conform with what was needed by the fire department, but failed to address another sheet. They also require the sewer commission approval. I don't...
They did receive that.
They did receive that. Okay. And a statement from City of Manchester Water Works. They've asked for certain things with the mains. They need an increase in the mains, so they're working with them. They also provided a draft, which has a dra...I'm sorry. The cover sheet has a drafting error showing the truck turning movement, which needs to be addressed. And there's quite a number of items that have not been addressed, that were brought up in this current staff report. But I would say that the traffic and the architect seems to be probably the two biggest right now. So, I think that we should just go through the comments, have the applicant explain what they've done, go through the comments, allow Scott to go through the traffic report as it stands today, the traffic review, I should say, and see where you want to go with this.
Thank you. Board members, questions for staff? Barbara?
Joanne, I have a question. You said there were substantial conditions, but your suggested conditions for approval to date are the standard ones.
I put them there just so that they're there and they don't get lost. Certainly, there will be others.
So, your reference was to the sort of general comments?
Correct. Those are like the template.
I mean, I have to tell you, my review of them was that half of these are of some substance, but a lot of them were not.
Right.
Am I right?
Yeah. Those are the template items.
Yes.
It's really, in my opinion, the two largest items are those two. And then, there's also some questions that Scott, again, can provide you with on the stormwater report. He doesn't...he's not accepting it. So, there's some errors in there as well.
Anything else? Scott, you had your hand up, Colas.
So, they agreed to waive the 65-day clock?
Not yet. They haven't...
We need to ask them.
Have they requested in writing?
No. We're asking them to waive the clock.
So, before we begin, any other questions for staff? Before we begin with anything, I'd like one representative of the applicants to state their name and state whether they agree to waive the 65-day clock. So, one of your team there has to speak up. I'll take a name and a statement from one of you.
I'm John Sander from Inside Real Estate.
You agree to waive the 65-day clock?
Grudgingly, yes, I do.
That would be yes.
No one is ever enthusiastic about it.
I didn't.
Fine. So, we have that answer. So, the first thing I'll do is I'll ask our town engineer, Scott, to come up and speak to whatever he chooses to speak to to start. And if you don't want to do it all in one fell swoop, we can bring you back up when the time is right.
Sure.
For the record?
Scott Ozanah, the town engineer. So, the plan comments, I don't have much there. You'll see, I have the first 12 comments from DPW are kind of the boilerplate. They would be approval conditions. There's not much to those. The first plan comment is simply drafting error. I think 14 is kind of the same thing. The site grading and silt fence extending beyond the unit line. Their response to this comment was that they could include a temporary construction easement. My recommendation is to do that. And that mainly is because in case that empty parcel next door were to get sold while this is all ongoing, you know, I know right now the same person owns both, but if it were ever to be sold, and they're actually sloping onto the other property, I think that's kind of important to include. The 10-foot-wide access road is a requirement per our regulations, and they kind of just drew two lines that go to the front of the detention basin, and there's really no way to access the rear of the detention basin or the outlet structure because of the grading. If you looked at the grading plan, that would be the best way to see that. So, I think that needs to be cleared up. Number 17 just states that there were returning movements. Drawing has the clearance bar at the entrance to the drive-through. And the firetruck would definitely hit it there, but then, when you go to the actual site plan, the general plan, it has been moved to a location where you have the two-lane drive-through there with the bypass. So, the firetruck, I believe, could get around it. I just...I think we want to see that new location on returning templates, so we can make sure it clears. The stormwater report, this is one that I think needs to be checked a little further. So, our town regs require that they check for surcharging for the 50-year storm. So, surcharging is when the water in the pipe goes above the pipe in the system. So, basically, your pipe isn't under pressure. There is an instance, for the 25-year storm, three structures are underwater, and then for the 50, three are also underwater. So, I think they need to reevaluate their stormwater report there and possibly make some changes to fix that. I don't know if it's increasing the size of the detention basin or how they would fix it. They currently are kind of at minimum pipe depth, so they can't really go deeper with the system or come up with the system. Now, the traffic report was the area of the town's big, or our biggest concern over at DPW. So, we first had Southern New Hampshire look at it, Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, and they gave some decent comments, but the commenter didn't have the traffic background that I think we were looking for in the review. So, we requested to have VHB take a look at it, and they found some areas of concern. So, the first area is during the whole, everything to do with the pandemic, traffic volumes went down all around the state, the country, and we've started to bounce back from that traffic numbers have. So, New Hampshire DOT has a specific method to adjust traffic volumes to the changing volumes of...because of the pandemic. So, their method doesn't require, but it has them look at the entire month for which the counts were taken. But, I'm sorry, so, this isn't my area of expertise, so...
I think that's correct. Instead of the particular day.
Yeah. So, they looked at a particular day historically, as opposed to the entire month, and that doesn't follow the standard. So, this could change their adjustment factor slightly, which would change their traffic volumes that would be utilized in their synchro model. And also, having to do with the same thing. So, these pandemic numbers were looked at at permanent traffic counters that the state has, and the two that they utilized for this particular traffic study are found in Bow and Concord, which aren't even in our county. So, this one was more, they wanted...VHB is asking for support as to why these two count stations were used, as opposed to ones that are closer to Goffstown and within our county even. So, those two comments, four and five, from VHB could ultimately affect the traffic numbers that are used for this...the analysis. So, then, there's another comment that said they agreed with their growth rate, but ultimately numbers could change because of the pandemic adjustment.
And then, what about the center turning lane?
Yeah, that's one of their last comments. So, the other one that they questioned was, in a nutshell, there's this internal capture, which is basically, you've got houses back there, you have the bank, you have Rite Aid. So, traffic's already entering Abingdon Way to go to those places. So, some of that traffic will utilize Starbucks while they're in there. So, Starbucks or the coffee shop has some set amount using ITE that it has a certain amount of trips that will go to it. So, the internal capture allows some of those trips to be existing trips. But one of the things that VHB found was, they looked at...the study looked at a percentage of...they said a certain percentage is going to Rite Aid, a certain percentage is going to the bank, and a certain percentage is going to the houses. But they didn't say how those percentages were taken, because no internal counts were taken. So, that could ultimately affect some numbers. So, the traffic signal at Abingdon and Mast Road has a dedicated pedestrian phase. And in their synchro analysis, they don't have the pedphase trip at all. So, when they were out there doing the counts, I think there were a small handful of actual pedestrians that were actually counted. That doesn't say how many times the pedestrian signal was tripped, but New Hampshire DOT recommends that in a peak hour that they show five different phases or five different trips during that peak hour, which could ultimately change the level of service and the way the signal functions. So, not including it at all, we want to see them change the analysis to include pedphase trips. So, that could ultimately change their level of service. They had some questions about how the drive-through queue was basically established. So, they're just looking for backup, or we're looking for backup for this. So, they're saying they can store 13 cars in the actual drive-through lanes, but they didn't include any information as to how that...where that 13-car number came from. So, there are metrics to do this, where you have some set period of time that it takes for a order to basically be filled, so that, you know, you have some rate that the cars cycle through. So, we're just looking for that backup. This comment 19 is kind of about the geometry of the eastern, I think it's the eastern entrance, how it doesn't quite line up across from the exit of the Franklin Savings Bank. I don't quite know how that would be resolved. It's a pretty low-volume road. I don't know if that's a huge issue. Comment 20 is about the striping. I can work with TF Moran to talk about that, but 21 is, I think, the one that I'm the most concerned about. So, Dunkin' Donuts is kind of just across the street from the Abingdon Way, and their drive-through is off of Patane Street, which is about, I think it's about a...it's a little over 100 feet from the intersection of Abingdon Way.
It's two blocks.
Two blocks, sure. And my concern is, we have this queue of cars that are queued up to turn left into Abingdon Way, and then, we have the cars that are headed in the opposite direction towards downtown Goffstown that want to turn left into Dunkin's. Now, they're going to be fighting for that storage space between Patane and Abingdon, and that was not accounted for in the traffic study at all. So, what we're asking for is that, basically, the turning movements be counted into Patane and then at the three peak hours. And then, I'd like to see that thrown into their traffic analysis to actually see how it all functions. Because if they start...if they can't fit in that turn lane, then they're going to spill out into the through lane, and then, it'll just block traffic. So, that's our concern there. So, that was quick. I know you wanted to go quick.
That's right. Exactly right.
So, there was a lot of stuff.
Did you submit all these comments to the applicants in writing prior to this meeting?
We sent them a copy of the traffic.
So, they did receive? These are not just hitting them?
They didn't get them...what, Tuesday? Was Tuesday...
I think so.
Wednesday? So, they weren't...
Yeah, I don't have these. I don't have the record of the...I have the staff comments, but I don't have the traffic comments.
I agree. I didn't have any record of VHB.
That was an attachment.
You didn't send me?
I'm just saying, I can check, verify tomorrow.
Okay.
Based on the stuff I just checked in my file.
All right. I just want to get it on the record whether they received them or not, or if they were being blindsided with them right now.
I'm sorry. I thought they were.
I am personally, whereas out of nothing, then we're not.
All right.
So, they have not enough to comment on?
No. And it had more to do with when they came back from VHB than anything, so...
All right.
Can I just also bring your attention to one thing as you review this? If you look at the plan set in front of you, and you go to Sheet 1 of 1, that was a separate sheet that I asked for, because they're supposed to be showing buildings within 200 feet of the site. So, the plan that they've submitted is the actual site plan is only showing their building, nothing around them. So, you don't really get a sense for what's going on there. So, that sheet, if you're wondering where things are located, just look at Sheet 1 of 1.
So, they complied with the request and added the sheet to you?
They did, yes.
David, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Scott?
Yes.
Was there any consideration in the traffic analysis for the vacant lot that would further stress this in the section?
No. And so, I had...it was either myself or Southern New Hampshire Planning that asked that question in the first round of comments, which they've responded to. And their response was that, since we don't know what's going in yet, it could be something that hardly produces traffic. It could be something that does, that a separate traffic study would be submitted with any future development at that site.
Good. Any other board members have questions for Scott before we invite the applicant? Seeing none, Scott, if you would like to, you can actually join us at the table. You're welcome to sit in one of these chairs here and stay right up here with us. That way, you don't have to jump back and forth.
Bring my water with me.
You can sit next to Colas, if you like, right there.
There's a bunch of stuff on the seat. I don't know where to...
Is that your paper?
No, that goes with whoever was sitting right there. The person who never showed up.
All right. So, at this point, I'd like to ask the board members, have any questions before we invite the applicants up? Seeing none, we'll ask you folks to come up to the table.
I'll do an intro.
So, before we proceed, Joanne, what would you feel is appropriate way to go from here? We're going to let them speak to the comments individually?
Well, first, I think you should ask them if they're willing to waive the 65-day...
They already did.
They already did. Oh, they already did. I must be sleeping. Yes, I think...well, first, I think they should just give an overall of what they've changed since the last time they were here. And then, I'm not sure if they're really ready to answer all of these questions, but maybe...
All right.
So, gentlemen, for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm John Sander from Inside Real Estate. We are purchasing...we're going to be purchasing the land and developing the Starbucks apartment lot drive-through. With me, you guys know...
Jason Hill, professional engineer, TF Moran.
And I've also brought with me...
Gary Hennigman with Wright's Architects.
You get that name?
No. What is it?
Gary Hennigman, H-E-N-I-K, Henn.
Thank you very much. And you're from the architectural firm?
Yes.
Okay. Continue, please.
Yeah, so, thanks, board, for having us, and Joanne for the presentation. I think you hit all the points I wanted to hit, and your summary was accurate in that we were here before you guys before. The comments were pretty substantial last time. We've addressed what I believe to be the majority of them. And as I said last time I was here, not trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes, want to keep everyone happy. Since the last time, the plan hasn't gone through major changes, but we did add the bypass lane to the drive-through, as the board had requested, and we changed the elevations up from the last schematics that were given to the board to try to accommodate the area more. We have since received the second round of comments. We're working to address them all. As was kind of half-stated, I believe a majority of them, if not, not all of them, but a majority of them are technical, and I believe could be resolved at staff level, withstanding the traffic and the elevation comments, as we've started to hit on, that we can get into in a little more detail. And I guess I'd just like to say, this project is important to our tenant. They really want to be here, and, I mean, we want to get it built, obviously, but we think it's going to be a great benefit to the town. We've gone back to them with the revisions that we made to the plan, you know, adding the extra pavement for that bypass lane, upping the elevations, and they're willing...they were willing to up the rent that those additions would cause, but they're near their threshold. And so, we're trying to not make them unhappy, but also not trying to make you guys unhappy as well. So, our intent tonight would be to discuss any of these comments, specifically traffic and elevations, with staff and with board, discuss the conditions of approval. And our intent today is to ask the board for approval of the CUP application and conditional site plan approval pending answering all of the staff comments and going through the proper permits necessary for us to complete this work.
Thank you. Jason, you got something for us, or are you just hanging tight?
I'll offer that. I agree with the technical review comment assessment, and Scott did a good job explaining things. You know, regarding the drainage comment, number 21, this site has such low flow, it's such a small amount of impervious area, that if we need to upgrade a pipe by three inches from a 12 to a 15, or a 15 to an 18, although I don't see it happening, easily accommodated by adjusting finish grades to provide adequate cover. It doesn't change the volume of flow to the pond, because the conveyance is all occurring. You know, the routing flows all the water, so it doesn't change any of our treatment systems. I do drainage design commonly, and so, that's...I just second, I think that's not going to change the face of the project, as you're all looking at it. So, just want to put that point to that comment. I submitted a narrative, which I will not, unless requested, I trust you all have, by written narrative on the conditional use permit criteria. I'll submit by reference that document to the board. I can read the specifics, but I'm trying to be precise in my time. I'd like the architect probably to present a little bit of the architecture of this project, and that's been pretty much most of the discussion, a majority of the discussion forward. But I just, by reference, would reference by conditional use permit narrative as part of the application package, and that is required for the proposed drive-through facility. I can answer, hopefully, any questions you may have on that criteria, but what I'd like to do, I think, is let the architect kind of present and... to do, I think, is let the architect kind of present, unless you have something otherwise, on some of the general aspects of the architectural components of the project.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I can give the initial overview, which I think I touched on, is that last time we were here, and as mentioned this time as well. The first schematic that we have presented was a new Starbucks prototype, it's kind of what they want all their buildings to look like. And it's kind of a mix between the rendering that's in your packet, as well as the typical, the picture of the typical Starbucks. It's somewhere in between those is what was going to be proposed for this site. We heard staff comments and worked to prepare a few different alternatives. We went back and forth a couple times, trying to change the sightings up, change the accents up, and we believe that changing from, again, high level, I'll let Gary get into it, but changing from all Ephesus, like, you know, faux stucco, to more of a ship-lap siding really meets the aesthetic that we're going for in this area, and Starbucks agrees. Personally, I think it does look a lot better as well. But that's kind of the overall. I know that I've said it a few times, and not to be rough on record, not trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes here, if you want to make everyone happy, and we understand that you're going for a certain look, so we're willing to work with you. I just know the big hang-up for us was a flat roof versus a peaked roof, and we tried on our end as well to look at the economics of that and see if it could work. And that's, our big sticking point is for this project to proceed, it needs to be a flat roof. So we're willing to gussy the elevations up a little bit more if need be, change some colors, change some palettes. But I know that's, at least from my seat, where I stand on that. I can't make a peaked roof work, unfortunately. We've done it on past projects, and the design costs increases, as well as just construction escalations that I know everyone's privy to these days, which, not a good reason, I understand, but still the reality. It would make the project unfeasible for us and for our tenant, they wouldn't be able to pay the rent that would be needed. So Gary, if you want to get in for some specifics?
The board's, I have S2, 3, 4 on the alternative, Gary, on that.
As John was saying, we originally had an Ephesus building with a different type of siding. We went with a lap siding and a ship-lap siding up above, and then we covered the metal canopy. Then went with some fabric awnings here to kind of soften up the architecture. And then we have a brick wainscote, and these are kind of similar to the adjacent buildings to Bank and the Rite Aid, have a similar architectural style, obviously, without the peaked roof. So in the drive-through window, we kept the metal canopy, that's something that Starbucks wants. And then up at the patio area in the front of the building that faces the road, we have added the fabric awnings with a different siding as well, to change it up from what we previously had.
Do you have color renderings?
These are color renderings, they're--
They may have come out a little dark.
Kind of came out a little dark, there's a lot of gray tones. So we are open to looking at maybe a different palette.
You want to pop that third one open?
Sure. Here's the third iteration.
We did one in-house as well.
You can add some white trim boards to the building.
Or we could go more white, we could go more tan, or beige, to kind of match the palette of the other buildings as well. Like, we're open to that.
I have a question for you. What happens to canvas awnings in the winter time when they're loaded with snow?
They usually, it usually doesn't catch a lot of snow, it'll just slide off.
Yeah, we do them in the Midwest as well.
So we're not going to be hearing how the canvas awnings are taken down in the winter time and put back up when the weather's nice?
No, they stay up all year.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind the board, I don't know if you've seen them, or an email that came in from Kimberly.
Yeah. What does she have to say? I didn't read it.
She had comments on both projects.
The architectural style.
On this project.
So could you please read Kimberly's comments into the record, Joanne?
For this project, she said, "I would not support an architectural style that is not similar to the New England style that we typically require in our town. There are several Starbucks in the region that have this style, and it is not unfeasible for them to make their building look similar in nature to those, especially given how close it will be to Franklin Savings Bank."
Okay.
May I ask who Kimberly is?
Kimberly is our vice chair, she normally sits right here.
That Kimberly, thank you.
That one.
Board members, any questions for the architect at this point?
Kimberly, from her email, obviously feels pretty strongly about this. You know, this building sort of reminds me of heading back into the late 70s and the architecture that all of a sudden was coming out then after Colonial, we were all going modern, flat roofs, and it fell out of style, actually, fairly quickly in New England. Can you do any, it seems to me, from an architectural standpoint, the sticking point is the front, right? That's, the front is the piece, you want to have some visibility from the road, past Franklin Savings Bank. Once people are in the queue, or people are not looking at it from the Rite Aid side, they're not looking at it, right? The front is really the New England-style-ish. So can you, and so, I mean, I'm not saying you have to put trusses up and a roof on the whole building, can you do anything on the, would corporate let you do anything in the front? Because, you know, I'm trying to remember what the Starbucks in Bedford looks like. If anybody can make them do anything, it would be Bedford.
Oh, they'd make them do it.
Yeah. Don't they have nice little architectural signs? Do you understand what I'm saying? Can you do anything with the front? Can you make it look like a saloon, you know, the saloon on a movie set? Give me a front that looks New England-y? Because that's the only part people are going to see. Once they're closer to the building, they're either going to be in line or leaving drinking their coffee.
I'd have to ask, well, the tenant and my construction side, if we can, if it's just the front.
Right.
I would lean towards a yes.
Like a mansard roof or something?
Yes. That's what I was going to say, but I was waiting for you to say it first.
Yeah, we could definitely look at something like that.
And then, so you can--
I mean, we feel that this is nicer than the Dunkin' Donuts down the street, which has a flat roof.
The Dunkin' Donuts has been serving coffee to our residents for decades, though, so they get a lot of slack. If we were dealing with a pre-existing building and business there.
I think if you look at projects that have been passed by this board, going back a few years, you'll see that most of the projects, if not all of them, have made the same requests as being made tonight, and most everyone is willing to help us out. What's it got, a little hat on the top?
It has like a--
All right.
Some point answer.
Yeah. It has a little boba on a nice roof.
Did you describe--
I know Bedford could make them do it.
Before we go there, Tim, can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
So the argument is, we can't go from a flat roof to a peaked roof because the costs go up so much, it makes the project unfeasible.
Well, that's what I was--
What is the difference in the cost? I'd like to know. Compared to the overall construction of the entire building, what's the difference?
Adding the peaked roof.
Cost, numbers.
300 grand.
300 grand to go from a flat roof to a peaked roof?
You have--
Repriced it.
You have facilities on the flat roof, right?
Correct.
And accommodating them in another manner is--
Well, sometimes you get the fire code issues, if you have timber trusses, you have to, that space needs to be sprinkled, so that can, in some, and I'm not a bark attack, but that can trigger fire code upgrades with a full peaked roof, but there's definitely--
And it's not unusual to put utilities on a roof and disguise them with false fronts around them to disguise them, I don't know. I mean, there's alternatives here, other than just saying, "It's more expensive, we can't do it, it blows the project."
Generally speaking, that's not an answer that we're willing to accept, unfortunately. Because cost doesn't play into a decision at this board. We don't crunch numbers as part of our purview. We're more interested in protecting the image that is the town and what's going on in town, and that's where our requests are from, not to indefinitely, or intentionally cost more money for the asset.
No, no, totally understood.
And I wanted to ask you a question, too. This first time around, wasn't this building described in your wording as an urban model? Did I read that?
It was, and we tried to change it to get away from that, to be more traditional.
Because we're definitely, this is not San Francisco or New York City.
Right.
So the total project cost is what?
Oh, I don't know.
No, I don't think that's a fair question.
We don't get to ask those questions.
I don't think that's a fair question.
They're saying, it's going to be so exorbitant--
So take it for what it's worth.
If it's a 1% increase, Barbara, in project costs, then I look at it a little different than if it's a 20% increase.
I don't want to entertain that question, I don't think it's a fair question for the applicant. We've never asked anyone in the past for a construction cost in my time on this board.
We haven't called.
We've never--
That's their argument, they raised the issue.
You can accept or reject it.
Yep.
And that's, it's not my argument, in so much as I'm just being straight with you guys. It's going to be hard for me to make it work. My argument is that we have added the design features we feel as adequate to change the style from urban to a more traditional, being the different siding, the canopies, the trim, the knee wall.
Except for the building that's considerably taller than the one you want to construct? Or are they the same height for the traditional versus the new style? We have two photographs there, typical and--
Typical is what I presented as that--
And where'd you find that, on Starbucks website?
Yes, and it's typical for this area. The other one is the first concept that they presented.
Barbie, you had your hand up?
I have a question, only because I know the chair has indicated he wants to get it out of here at 9:00, and we have another application that might have some discussion. So I just sort of wanted to know where we were going on this, because I do recall that the applicant wanted approval tonight, and basically leaving things to staff approval and work out. And so I'd sort of like to get that question answered for the applicant, because I could see us, we haven't even really talked about the traffic study issues, and I think we need to have a plan.
Well, the first question I would ask is, does anybody at this board feel that the planning board members need to weigh in on the traffic study, or is that an administrative decision if it meets what the town engineer has requested as deficiencies in the traffic study? Is that a board decision, or is that an administrative decision to meet that criteria? We generally say that if the town engineer is satisfied, that we're satisfied. That has been our past practice. So, you know, they're asking for administrative decisions on issues. What, the drainage issue would be an administrative issue if it meets the DPW satisfaction, would you concur with that? With sizing the pipes to talk about the surcharge for the storms?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, I mean, we, the person who makes the most technical comments on drainage is you, so--
But you, yeah, okay, we did.
The, they did address the turning, the additional lane for the drive-up through, which I brought up because I thought it was important.
The traffic study also has to deal with the queuing, and we don't have firm numbers on that.
Well, this is where we're going to refer to administration for a decision as to whether it meets the criteria or not.
So, if I could follow up on that. So the traffic, sounds like there are a couple of sort of major pieces of information in regards to what's going on. And I asked David, because I wasn't familiar, whether that base traffic studies took into time of day, and I'm assuming they did, time of day turnings, not only for here, but for Dunkin' Donuts. Okay, so--
That's one of the things we're asking for, is this counts as Dunkin' Donuts.
All right, because I want to try and sort of look at this a little logically and see, and know that you need to meet your requirements and to go there. But, I mean, I drove that way into Manchester to work for many years. So the traffic queue for Dunkin' Donuts was always from the 114 side in the morning. It was, it was not people coming from the Manchester side, that's just how the traffic went. And so that was always a right-hand queue, which I have to say, the new layout helped, I think, with the backup when we moved that. So I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going with this information. If we have some people who like Starbucks taking a right in the morning, because my guess is, from a business standpoint, that's where your longest queues are, right? Probably between 7:00 and 10:00.
Correct.
So you've got some people going off to Starbucks, I mean, to Dunkin' Donuts, because that's, and you've got some people then going up to make the left into Abingdon Way.
Abingdon Way.
And so you're worried about the queue at the lights to Patane Street, because people can't make the left into Abingdon, right? When we're talking about the queuing.
Yeah, so there's no signal at Patane, it's a unsignalized, it's a stop sign controlled out, so--
Right.
But what we're concerned is that there could be a queue of cars, so Jason's got the--
Do you show that Patane Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Patane Street right there. So Dunkin's drive-through is off Patane Street. Now, I completely agree with you that in the morning, it's probably far fewer vehicles turning left into Dunkin's because the heavier volume of traffic is headed into Manchester or just towards the interstate, or 293. And my traffic study copy's over there, but the queue for the left turns is substantial in the morning.
It is, okay.
No, the actual traffic study, I was just curious about the length. So even if you get a couple cars that want to turn left into Patane Street, they might not fit because the queue into Abingdon is substantial enough.
Is, are we assuming the signalization at Abingdon is correct for the traffic flow as it is now?
Well, they're toying with the timing of the signal to try and make it all function properly, but their synchro, or their analysis was just of the Abingdon intersection, it did not include Patane Street at all.
Okay.
I do believe that they did state prior meeting that they were willing to work on re-timing the signal lights--
Optimization is what's proposed, as well as--
That was previously stated.
Yes.
Did you consider queuing in Abingdon, or because that's a private road, we don't consider that? I mean, are they going to end up out onto Abingdon blocking the access to the bank or anything like that?
The queue in the traffic study isn't even long enough to block the right.
Okay, just wanted to ask that question.
Their timing is set so that it won't queue on--
I think it goes back to, like, a discussion with the town, maybe it was Highway Department, it was not Scott, but the problem here is that the town sees that not enough traffic, even though this is an existing two-way left turn that carries all the way through, the traffic, due to the specific condition of this intersection, a lot of the left-turning traffic stays in the through lane, and it clogs the eastbound through movements, because most of the traffic is turning into Rite Aid in the morning. So this project, that's the problem with this quadrant of this existing intersection. So by extending that left-turn pocket, it's going to pull that, give the, provide the opportunity for that left-turning traffic to get out of the through lane.
So you're proposing to re-strike that?
Also extending that left-turn lane to provide an additional one to two queuing spaces, and therefore we predict, based on our study, that in the future build condition, the function, the level of service in this intersection will be equal or to greater than what it is in the existing condition, with the added traffic from the Starbucks.
Tim?
Yes.
In the staff report, I did mention that the traffic study, or the traffic report, said that additional trips can be readily mitigated by the timing, which is what Scott had just mentioned. However, that signalized intersection is not functioning properly.
It's scheduled to be fixed this summer.
It's scheduled to be fixed, but currently it's not working properly. So what they're proposing will not work until that signal is upgraded.
I don't think that by this summer, that place is going to be built.
It shouldn't be.
No, but if I could finish. So the DPW department was suggesting that they may make a donation towards the upgrade of that signal, which would benefit both their project and the town roadway.
Well, that's, that hadn't even been mentioned till just now.
It's been in the staff report from the start.
Well, we haven't heard it from them yet.
They've known about it.
That's the off-site improvement costs. Did anybody put a number to that, Scott? That they have been presented with? Jason's nodding.
No, not, I don't know, I mean, we have the total number, and I can't remember it off the top of my head.
It says the cost of the upgrade is approximately 17,000.
17,000. That'd be 14--
Yeah.
That'd be 14 cups of coffee, we'd be all sitting. All right. So, the board has to decide what we're gonna consider administrative and what we're not. The main concern here tonight has been the architectural renderings, and it doesn't look like a New England building.
And that's part of, one of the criteria for the conditional use permit.
Right. So, unless the applicant can make an affirmative statement to the engine, to the architectural changes, I don't think it's an approval for tonight. We could consider certain things for administrative, but we certainly can't consider a non-answer for architectural as an administrative decision.
If we can get the architectural to be approved by staff, could that be?
See, you're, you're back to...
It's, it's the same question, right?
You're throwing it, you're throwing it at them to look at the picture and say that Joanne likes it. It's the board that has to like it.
If...
Jar, Barbara, please step up.
They've been working on this for a while. I think staff has done an amazing job looking at this. I personally would not want to saddle Joanne with the future responsibility for time, as to whether or not people think it looks right or not, that we could all point at it, and we would be calling it the Duffy Starbucks front face forever, and that would not be fair to her.
If there's gonna be a mistake, it should be our mistake, not hers.
Right. So, I think I'm willing to go with the traffic stuff, to let staff deal with the traffic.
And the drainage.
Especially with the length of the queue. What I'm, what I'm hearing is, the issue is not onsite, it's the off-site issue, and we let staff deal with that issue as to whether or not the side street impact can be mitigated all the time. But, I would want to see the architectural piece come back, but I would be willing to not have it in the packet and be, and have it on, be on the agenda if they get it to staff, you know, before the meeting or something, and let the rest of it be technical. I, I don't think it needs to be in a package two weeks ahead of time for our meeting, for us to consider.
So, what we're saying, what we're...
That's my position.
I think what Barbara's stating is that we would push this out two weeks, provide us with architectural renderings of the mansard roof at a two, at the next meeting, and it would be a very short discussion at the next meeting. And if you don't meet the deadline for submission in our packets, we could, we could have them submitted at the night of the meeting. Barbara, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't, I don't care about having it in the pack.
They would need to provide, no, just let me...
Go ahead, please.
Would they need to provide and address the other comments that we've brought up before you approved this plan?
We talked about letting those other comments be administrative, so you and Scott would make those decisions.
So, they can be a condition of approval, okay. Because another one I just saw is the burning bush. That has to come out of here.
Yeah, because it's an invasive species.
We, I agree that, that is, we will remove that plant. I didn't even speak about the buffering, but I can, just the, the height of the arborities screening, that was Joanne's comment, but I can address that if necessary.
Okay, so, we can make, staff can make a list of what's outstanding, and then you could, in your motion, include those items to be covered administratively.
Yes.
Okay.
Scott, do you feel that these could be handled administratively through your department, if they meet your criteria, DPWs?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, DPW says yes, Planning Staff says yes. Is there any other issues other than architectural outstanding, Joanne?
No, not that I'm aware of that staff cannot handle.
So, I think it's pretty obvious, folks, that if, if you can get those drawings for us for our next meeting on May 20, what's the date, 6?
May 26.
May 26, while you could be up and running in a two-week delay from tonight.
And you already have three items on that agenda.
I just see Hawks Motorsport on the agenda.
No, that's not even on. Can I, just one other question?
Barbara?
What are we doing about the fire department, and is this an issue, the sign? I mean, the fire department?
I actually have a handout.
It was a, it was a drafting error. It's in the correct spot. It won't be an issue.
It, it won't be an issue, okay.
I can hand that around, that I re-p...
We updated it.
The plan that shows...
All right, no, I'll take your, it's fine. If staff has looked it in, it takes care of it.
Do we have a copy of that, Jason?
I printed this, you do now.
You do now.
So, I didn't mean to...
Instant.
I was just saying, and that was the last sheet of the plan set. It was not, we, that was one of the final site changes I made for the tech comments, and I, and I didn't re-plop that PDF, so that's why the rest of the sheets...
So, your final plans that you submit for a signing will need to make sure they can call into...
They're all, they're all correct. The, the turning plan was, just they're not gonna be plotted.
Okay.
And those pulls, and that's what you were looking at. But, I'm sorry about that.
Board members, any other issues, or do we concur that we are gonna look at architectural drawings at the next meeting?
And the conditional use permit.
And the conditional use permit, and then get reports from engineering and Joanne, if anything has been squared away over a two-week period, otherwise, then we are gonna delegate them to administrative decisions. Is that a concurrence on the board's member, membership? Colas? David?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, I concur.
Do we need to have a public hearing?
Yes, I will. Thank you for that, Barbara. So, if you guys could park it back in your, you can leave your stuff right there if you want. You don't have to pack it all up right now.
Okay.
We have to open a public hearing. Thanks to Barbara, who has chaired for many years and reminds me of my shortcomings sometimes.
Always with Jim, isn't it?
You can stay, Scott. You've got another application coming up. We're gonna open a public hearing. Does anyone in the group here that's present tonight wish to speak in regards to this application? Map 18 lot 60 dash 2. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. So, do we need a motion to continue, Joanne, to May 28?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for continuing.
So moved.
Barbara made it, and Colas seconded. Any discretion of the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Five twenty, what's the date going, 6?
26.
Okay, we're doing fine. It's eight o'clock. We have another hour. We're doing great. The next application is new business. Joanne, would you please run it for us? It's map 30 lot, 36 dash 1. If you guys are gonna talk, UTF Moran guys, do it out in the parking lot.
Okay. We have a, an amended site plan, a site plan from many years ago.
Don't forget your drawings. Sorry, Joanne, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
This has had started out many years ago as an office building. It is currently a metal office building. They would like to add additional parking spaces, as well as, as well as some drainage changes to, to the drainage. However, they need relief from the 50-foot, from the outer 50-foot, about the 100-foot wetland surface water buffer.
Okay.
This, this work is slightly within that. And, and the stormwater work is minor, however, they still need for its approval. So, they're, so they are here for the amended site plan, as well as relief from the outer 50-foot. However, the plan is, I mean, I'm sorry, the application is, is complete and ready for review. This does not have regional impact. However, there are three waivers that they are requesting. One is for a traffic study. The other is for the requirement of the bio retention area onsite, and the other is landscaping and screening, since this is an existing site in use today.
Thank you, Joanne. Board members, question for staff? Barbara?
Is this application to fix a parking lot, which is sort of how the applicant would have us, what this is, before us, only because they are requesting an increase in space? In other words, if the applicant wanted to upgrade the parking and the line, the, the boundaries of pavement as it is on the site currently, would they need to come before us?
It's because they're increasing the impervious coverage.
Okay, so the, so they are free to upgrade the parking area within the bounds as it currently exists?
Existing parking area.
They are, and we typically, if someone, you know, wants to do that, and we don't see any issues with it, we'll ask them to provide a drainage study, and then DPW will typically review that study.
But not, but not with, in regards to planning, the only reason it's here is because they want to add 16 spaces.
And they're, and they're changing a, a small portion of their drainage.
And has there been any request in the planning department, or the building department, for a change to the building?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, the next question is, what permits are they required from DPW?
Permits?
Yeah.
They want to change the driveway a little, so they require driveway permits.
Modification permit?
Yeah, just a modification.
They're widening with both driveways to 24 feet.
I'm just asking, what permits are required from DPW, and it's driveway modification permits?
And possibly a street opening permit.
If they're, yeah, if they work in the right-of-way, they need a street opening permit.
Yeah.
And they also need a...
That's one of the comments, as well.
Floor land permit from the state, because there's in close proximity to Glen Lake.
Any other questions for staff and board members? Colas is quizzing.
Nope.
All right, so no other questions for staff. I'll ask for a reckon, a motion regarding the...
We've already found it's complete, and accept it for hearing, and find this no regional impact.
All right.
There's a motion been made by Jim, seconded by Colas, to find this is complete, ready for review, with no regional impact. What about the waivers, Jim?
We're accepting it without, and reserving any action on the waivers until we hear the applicant's appreciation on it.
So, as Jim would usually say, we're the waiver, we're gonna grant the waivers for discussion purposes only. You amend your second?
Yes.
Second's been amended. Any discussion? All those say, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passes. All right, we'll ask the applicants to identify themselves and speak up.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Pete Madison. I'm a project engineer at Keats Nordstrom Associates. I'm joined by Matt Peterson, Senior Project Manager at KNA, and we are representing the property owner, PRM RGM LLC, for the project located at 89 South Mass Street. You guys covered it pretty well, honestly, in your, in your, in your introduction there, but I'll just run through this quick, and we're on a time crunch, so.
Not that big of a time crunch, you can be thorough.
You're a slow dog.
All right. The applicant is proposing...
Don't tell them that. Go ahead.
My, my presentation was gonna be two hours until you told me.
You're not getting it.
So, the applicant is proposing to improve and reconfigure the existing parking lot to gain an additional 16 parking spaces. This request was actually prompted by the DMC Primary Care recently moving into the building, and the lot is located in the residential small business office district and the surface water conservation overlay district, a couple mouthfuls there, due to its proximity to Glen Lake in the north. So, as stated, will have some impacts within the surface water district. I'll touch on that again later. Like you guys previously mentioned, we're requesting three waivers. One from Section 2 for a traffic study. The use of the building is not changing, therefore, we do not expect any additional traffic. The second waiver for installing a bio retention area on a private site. The nature of this project being a reconfiguration of a parking lot, pretty minor reconfiguration at that, makes it difficult, challenging to fit a bio retention system in here without regrading the entire site, which is obviously is gonna impact, cause much more impacts, much more disturbance. Additionally, the stormwater system that we have provided will provide the adequate treatment that a BNP, or that a bio retention system would offer as well. And the third waiver is for landscaping plan. Like Joanne mentioned, the site is existing. There's existing landscaping. It looks, looks great, and we believe that it's adequate. Now, I'll get into the plan set here, if you guys all have the plan set in front of you. Okay. The first plan I want to talk about here is Sheet 2, the removals demolition plan. Basically, this plan shows two different hatches I want to highlight for you. So, one shows the pavement to be overlaid in the parking lot, and the other shows the pavement to be...
Could you refer to Sheet number, please?
Sheet 2 of 8, removals demolition plan. So, we have two different hatches on here. One's showing the pavement to be overlaid, and the other showing the pavement to be removed and replaced. You'll see that the pavement in the front lot is that dot hatch, and that's to be overlaid with 1.5 inches of top coat. The pavement in the rear lot, I'll call, is, is rather deteriorating, and will be removed and replaced with 3 inches of asphalt. I will point out, there's a small section of pavement to the western, adjacent to the western property line, that will be removed completely. And if we move to the next sheet, Sheet 3, this is our site plan, that shows why. We're kind of realigning the parking lot to be a little bit more square with the building, and get those, those proposed parking spaces in there. So, a small section of that pavement will actually be replaced with lumen seed. So...
Be nice to know what your trade-off percentages are being, when you tell us in the end.
Sure, absolutely. I believe I have that number. I'll get that for you. So, like I said, this area to the west, on that western property line, you can see we're adding four spaces and the five spaces, gives us a total of nine right there. And then, in the front, we are re-striping, the, the spaces are diagonal today, and we're, we're re-striping them to be perpendicular to the drive aisles. This opens it up and gives us a few more spaces. We get an additional seven right there for the full 16 that is requested as part of this project. Now, now, one of the big things that DPW brought up was widening the, the driveways to 24 feet. Basically, what we had originally proposed was widen these driveways and provide two-way access throughout the site, where currently today, it's a, it's a one-way. And now, there's been, there's been some comments on that, so what we would offer, it's not shown on this plan, is to leave the driveways the width that they are, which is 20 feet, and we would leave one-way circulation throughout the site. This basically gets us out of the right-of-way. I know the street is, South Mass Street is gonna be under moratorium this summer, and we wouldn't want to wait until 2025 to do any construction. So, if we can pull out of the right-of-way and not require any of those permits, that's, that's fantastic, and we'd like to do that. So, like I said, we'll, we'll, we will not propose to widen those to 24 feet. We'll leave them what they are, and, and keep one-way access through the site. Now, part of this parking lot reconfiguration calls for approximately 2,700 square feet of impacts within the outer 50 of the 100-foot surface water buffer. As such, we're seeking reliefs for those impacts. Impacts include removing and replacing the pavement, like I previously mentioned, and just installing temporary perimeter controls, erosion controls during construction. I will point out that the rail trail runs along the, the northern property line in the back there, about four-foot high berm that separates the property from Glen Lake, so we are not anticipating any, any runoff into the lake from, by any means.
Could you go to map, Sheet 3 of your 8, and explain to all the board members where the 50-foot, outer 50-foot, how many spaces it impacts, and where it shows on the plan?
Yes, sir. So, if you take a look here, this is the 100-foot wetland setback. Here's your 50 right here. So, the property is completely out of the 50. From here to here is your outer 50. There's one, two, three, four, five spaces in there, and I guess we'll call it all nine back here. So, it would be 10 spaces, it looks like.
Those are existing spaces.
These are existing spaces in the back. There's not a space right here. This is the only space that is gonna be added in that.
Question, while you're on that map, can you go through again and, and show me, tell me the number and where the additional parking spaces are, because I'm not coming up with 16, so I'm doing my math. You're adding four on the west side.
Yes.
The back stays the same at nine.
Yeah, nine, yep.
The front by the road adds two?
13, yeah, plus another 14 inches.
So, it goes from 12 to 14 in the front, right?
Yep. I believe this was 10, and you just added it.
Oh, okay.
So, there were 10 on the, on the front of the building for existing conditions?
Yes, that's correct.
And you want to make that 15?
And we're making that 15, correct.
So, the math adds up to?
To, uh, what?
And two more on the front.
Uh, where is it? 47. Where's 712?
Let's see, the difference between pre-existing and that, you've got five spaces in the front of the building, two on the roadside, so that's seven, and then you're adding four on the side, so seven and four is 11.
There's another five adjacent to the building.
Oh, I didn't see it, because I looked at all that circles all over.
If you look to the right on the four spaces, they're next to the building.
Where is it?
Under that circle thing with the light?
Right here.
The bolt setting on it, spotlight?
Oh, oh, there they are.
I didn't see them.
I didn't either, that's why my math wasn't working.
Okay, so now I know where the proposed spaces are.
47 total, there's 31 currently on site.
So, explain to us where the giveaways, the takeaways are for your green space that you're giving up in order to do this. Where are you giving up green space, uh?
Sure.
Or adding it in, or what are you doing with the green space? Tell us what plan you're gonna be on, so we can look.
I don't know if you guys have this one, this is one that we presented to the Conservation Division.
Which sheet is it?
Uh, it, I don't believe it's in this plan set, I think it's just a one of one, but it, I think it provides the best view of kind of-
Well, pick one that's in our plan set and try to describe it for us.
I did have a copy of it, it looks like this, and-
Oh, Joanne, she provided us a copy of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the picture of the New Hampshire grant picture, the green thing. So-
Okay, so the wetland setback impact plan, you guys want to take a look at that?
That's what we have.
Okay, great. So, you can see the two, the two areas of impact, I'll call them, within the 50 to 100-foot wetland setback. So, we have this one area here with roughly 1,300 square feet of impact, and this area here with a little bit over 1,300 square foot of impact. And this stuff in here, this hatching is just replacing and, or removing and replacing that pavement. See this one corner up where it says EOP in the top left of the plan?
Yep.
So, that edge of pavement, you can see the existing edge of pavement versus the proposed edge of pavement. So, basically, that is what's being added within that, that outer setback.
Okay.
So, I believe it's 349 square feet is the total impervious that's being added in that area.
Are you giving us any more green space, or are you just taking green space from the site?
Uh, we're taking green space from the site.
Okay, I wanted to get that on the record.
I think, I think at the end of the day, we are decreasing slightly, very slightly, but yeah, I mean, so you can see the existing pavement goes along right here, and we are now proposing some green space. So, this pavement will all be removed and replaced with green space, however, this will be removed and replaced with additional pavement.
Along with next to the building there.
And next to the building, exactly.
That big, that big clear spot that's not hatched is now all gonna go to green to pavement.
I believe that was originally proposed as a building addition for this building. I took a look at an old site plan, and it's what it looked like.
So, it was left open.
Right.
Any other questions right now before I ask a little? Jim?
Well, just to be clear, the applicant has said there'd be no increase in traffic, but it sounds like because of the, like, Dartmouth Hitchcock coming, you're expecting more cars, thus the need for more spaces, that competes to me like increased traffic.
Could be, could be the-
And let me ask the applicant first.
The use of the building remains the same, it was previously permitted as a medical office building, and remains a medical office building.
That doesn't answer the question. I'm sorry for being blunt, but it doesn't answer the question. David?
Would you be saying that you're expecting patients to remain on-site longer? Is there a, no?
I don't, I don't, I don't-
I can't speak to that.
Okay, so I just toss it out to you.
Well, I mean-
I think that if you are increasing traffic parking areas, you're expecting more people to come and go, or you're expecting more staff or something, you wouldn't be asking for more parking if you weren't going to be expecting additional use of the site. So, Matt's come up to the table, he's gonna identify himself for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm Matt Peterson with Keach-Norsham Associates. I think what we're trying to explain on this here is that we have a certain square foot of medical office that's the exact same square footage as before. Dartmouth Hitchcock has asked them if they could bring some more parking to it. In my opinion, it was underparked based on what that was that was there. The use is the exact same square footage inside the building, there's no more offices that have been added, there's no more doctor spaces that have been added. It's more of a use for the people that are coming in and out and to have more, you've seen the striping that's out there, it's not very easily moving around and that kind of stuff there. You guys just saw a traffic study submitted, okay? The only thing I can do on a traffic study is grab the IT for a medical building, base it on the square footage that's there, and what it would have been before I did this, and right here, is gonna be the exact same numbers. So, the only thing I can do from a traffic standpoint is take a look at Mass Road and see if the left turn into the site is an issue. I would then offer that this is a doctor's office, that people are not, you know, the main use of that is not between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, it's an all-day type of use that we have on this site that's there. I, I mean, a traffic study is, is, you know, we can put a traffic memo together, and it's, it's gonna be based on IT and then the square footage, I guess I want to know what you think.
What's IT stand for, Matt? What's IT stand for?
I'm not, what are we, what are we getting back and forth like this? This is, this is being conjunct-
Transportation engineers.
Yeah.
I want to know what your acronym, your stance, I don't know what it means.
Institute of Traffic Enforcement.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you guys just talked about the last one. My bad.
I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe the Elliott Hospital medical offices were in there at one time.
I think there've been a few different ones, I'm not sure the names that have been there, but yes.
All right.
I guess, again, what is your concern when you say there could be increase? There's not an increase to the building, we've allowed more access for parking.
Okay.
No, the question was, should we be concerned, because there was a statement, two inconsistent statements, you may have explained them, but I think it was a fair question.
I understand.
And I don't want you, you know, suggesting we can't ask you questions, okay?
Gotcha.
Sorry, Jim. So, what does zoning require? Where are they relative to what's required under the zoning?
I have it listed in here, so they have, currently, they have 31 parking spaces. They actually, our regs require 56. With this increase, they will have 47, so they're still lacking nine, however, they're making an improvement to what it was.
Can we ask Scott, are you aware of any traffic issues on this site?
Not that I'm aware of.
And in your opinion, is this increase in parking going to create any parking, traffic issues in your work?
I do not believe so, I think that the, the use not changing, and the fact that there's already not enough parking on-site for the use per our zoning ordinance, it kind of, I agree with Matt's statement.
And I would also agree, you're not gonna see big AM peaks and big PM peaks in this area, so it's gonna be distributed over the course of the day, and all been a doctor's office.
No, I'm satisfied, it's a great answer.
Could you please explain, there's a page for, for the board members. Page 4 of 8, you show some infiltration drainage, could you please, the board, what the infiltration drainage is?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Basically, what we're-
There it is, so the board members know where to look for.
We're gonna go to Sheet number 4. We're proposing a twin row of 12-inch perforated plastic pipes wrapped in stone. This will, this, there's a catch basin where water will flow to, and it ties into the existing drainage network that's in the parking lot today. What's gonna happen here, runoff gets in, it infiltrates, there's great soils out here due to proximity of the Glen Lake, and we've taken the test pit out there and verified, and this provides adequate, adequate treatment for the increased impervious area.
And you're not providing, questioning anywhere else on the site, because those are areas that are gonna be overlaid and not removed?
That's correct, yes.
It's all same, it's out there.
And you, Scott, you reviewed it.
So, I reviewed the drainage study, yes. Their future, or the flow created by the added impervious does not increase to the town system, so that's the, the biggest concern we would have. We just had some maintenance questions about, about this particular system, and that was really it there, they're probably pretty easy for them to resolve.
What type of a roof sum is building? Pitch roof or flat?
It's a pitch roof.
What are you doing with the water on the building, are you gonna tie it into your system, or does it just go on the ground and?
As is, it just flows on the ground or onto the parking lot and into those two catch basins, those existing catch basins, or in the back, it flows off the back and-
Does it, is it captured on the site, or does it go to the neighboring properties?
It is captured on the site, I believe there is a small section that may flow to an existing property, the map 30, Lot 46A, we've had conversations with that a butter, and an agreement is gonna be made. I think we'll probably end up installing a leaching catch basin.
Well, I'd like to see that whatever you do, that your so, roof water stays on your land.
Sure.
And does not be conveyed onto the neighboring property.
That's the rule, isn't it?
Excuse me?
That's the rule, isn't it?
Well, this is a, now that they're coming in for changes, we have allowed to ask for these kinds of things. Okay, board members, any other questions for the applicants?
Can I just bring up one?
Sure can.
As far as the snow storage goes?
Yeah, I saw that on page 3, 2 or something.
So, there, I, I don't know if that's where they're storing their snow currently, but it shows on the site plan, Sheet 3 of 8, that they're proposing to store the snow between their site and the abutting property, lot 30, I'm sorry, not 30, Lot 46. And I was just concerned, because this being more of a commercial use with most likely salt usage in the parking area, the, the Lot 46 is a grassy area, right, adjacent to this snow storage, and I was just wondering if anyone had concerns about it?
No, it's the proximity to the abutment without any capture.
I think it's a good point, actually.
Because it, the abutment is residential, that's why I brought it up.
The only, the only thing we can do is we can, we can approve the snow storage that's on South Mass Street, ask them to remove the one adjacent to 30, 46, and then if there's snow on-site, it has to be removed, you have to truck it off the site.
And I, and I noticed there's no note concerning that, so if a note could be added?
Yeah, we would absolutely add a note, no, no salt or chemical de-ices to be used on-site, absolutely.
You say that, and then forget about that, I'm not gonna buy that note.
No, I was asking for a note about being hauled off.
Right.
Oh, yeah, we, that's also included in the note, correct, yep. If it exceeds the storage areas, it'll be hauled off in accordance with local and state records.
So, do you, do you concur that putting, removing the snow storage on the boundary between you and map 30, Lot 46 should, could be removed, and you could make a note that if something has to be hauled off-site, you'd do it?
I, I am concerned with, I know DPW had comments with the snow storage in the front on Mass Road and blocking sightlines. I, I believe the snow is stored on that west property line today, so-
Once again, we're back with a new application, so we have to make amendments.
Right, right, yep, I understand.
So, I would suggest you think about removing that proposed snow storage area there, and add a note that you will take it off-site if it becomes in the way for parking.
Can I ask the board a question on that?
Please, Matt.
As far as, like we said, what our clients have told us here on the spaces here, we're trying to get as, as best we can on layout there, the nine spaces parallel in the back, if I showed that as potential snow storage area, would the board have, you know, during the winter time, I've gotta talk to them, but-
It'll be on the trail.
No, the trails-
Brad, you'll get a chance to speak when the time comes, Brad, so I'll ask you to just-
I'm just saying, putting out pavement is clean from that standpoint if we add it there, but we'll talk to a client, no, no big deal, we'll remove it from that west property line.
All right. Any other stuff from board members before I, and the applicants, if you have anything else you'd like to add before we open a public hearing? Board members?
Tim?
I'm sorry, Barbara, I can lift over there.
I'm, I'm trying to balance this to the snow storage issue, so I'm willing to hear what people have to say about it. The reality is, to comprehend that this lot needs an additional, additional spaces is, it sort of brings to mind that we need to look at our regs, because this lot has been grossly underused for years. I mean, I never see this lot even close to full, so I don't think there's been a snow storage issue for years, because they haven't had to push it, and I, this is sad, but I remember that when this application, the applicant went through a big tussle with the board over the parking being in the front by Mass Road, because we wanted the building by Mass Road to keep with the aesthetics, and he insisted it be, the parking be in the front, because he wanted the sun for the snow to melt, that he couldn't put it in the back, yeah, it was Dan DeGraniere, that this was the layout that was gonna work for the site. So, I, I don't know how much the snow really is an issue, but you need to maybe think about it a little more.
Could you please explain to us one more time before you step back about why you're choosing not to seek a driveway modification permit for the road entrance?
Basically, we're going to leave the driveways the width they are right now, and-
Because?
Because we do not want to impact the right-of-way and require a right-of-way permit for, while the street is under moratorium.
Okay, and the street's under, gonna be under moratorium, why, Scott?
We plan to mill and pave it this summer.
Okay.
And I'm, I didn't notice a dumpster location.
We'll show it on the plan, we'll talk to the owner.
Isn't that section of road the section that had the green drainage installed there?
Yes.
10 or 15 years ago? Is that gonna be reinstalled, or is that going away?
Do not believe that it's gonna be reinstalled.
Okay. All right.
Can I just ask one more?
Please, it's your job.
If, if this were to be approved, would this work, is it possible for this work to be completed as far as the driveways go before DPW starts the process?
We just didn't have a tie, I don't think you know any time yet, you just said this summer, so we're, you know, we're here in front of you and could take a couple meetings, so we just-
There's someone in the audience that might be able to-
Oh, you've got more time, okay, all right, that's fine.
With the timeframe.
I don't want to ask your opinion, he's here for a different reason. You know what we could do if the board wishes to, we could, we could allow the additional driveway width to be installed if it's timely for the applicant to do the wider driveways, but if it's not timely, we could allow them to not do it. And it could be administered, you could just do it on a final plan, Jim, no? You're raising your hand?
Well, I, I have a question on two-way turning movements.
I thought they were gonna keep it one-way.
If they kept it the way it is.
If they want, if they increase it in the two-way in and out, does that create traffic issues? I would think it would, because you've got intersecting, now again, it's a limited traffic because of the use.
On massed or internally?
Well, on massed.
You might have two people trying to make a left at the same time.
Yeah. That is true, I'm sure that exists elsewhere, but they're offering to go to one-way.
That's, I would think-
Dave?
The traffic condition I observe is mostly at the arrival of school time, the traffic going into the Wallace-Mass roundabout is backed up so far that when I visit this facility for medical reasons, I'm always tempted to go in the wrong way, rather than wait another minute to get to the proper entrance, so there may be some, you know, some, some benefits what he's attempting to do.
I'll let the board decide for themselves how, what we-
It may be an issue, I don't want to create one if there is, but it does, but typically, we don't want to have it.
I got a technical question.
Yes, please say.
You're changing from diagonal packing to straight-in perpendicular parking, is the aisle sufficient for those movements?
Yes, it is 24 feet wide.
Thank you.
And that's, that matches town regulations as well.
Any other questions for the applicants, and we'll, otherwise, we'll open a public hearing, we can bring them back up if we want. Seeing now, we'll ask you guys to step back, and we'll, at 8:30, we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody wishes to speak on this application, now's the time.
I would be one of them.
All right, please state your name for the record.
My name is Brad Parkers, I live at 81 South Mass Street, I am Block 30-46, I am on the west end of the property. I wish I had known a little bit more about what all of this, I looked at the maps, and not being an engineer or a technical person, I really didn't understand them, I've learned more by being here tonight. My first question is, why do they need more spaces? Having lived there since that building was put in, there has never been a complete use of the parking lot, never, and it has gone through many iterations of tenants, it hasn't always been totally medical, so I'm concerned as to why they need to have more[1777.89] always been totally medical, so I'm concerned as to why they need to have more parking spaces. Let me also address the traffic, there will be continued traffic problems on South Mass Street. I lived there, I, for thirty-five years, I see it all the time, and yes, people, and Dave brought this up, people originally when they built it, there was an entrance and an exit, that's totally ignored today, totally, totally. Yes, you brought up about snow removal and snow storage, well, it gets dumped on my property all the time, and I've gone and spoken to the people who do the servicing, and I'm basically told where to go. They do use chemicals on that parking lot, and because I can watch them come in and spread when they put down their salt. There is a drainage problem on my end of the property, I assume that's going to be addressed when you do some milling and repaving, I don't know, I thought this was going to be addressed, as Tim said, ten to fifteen years ago, when they put in the quote-unquote two-foot pervious pavement, I'm sorry, four-foot pervious pavement, and now I guess that's going to be replaced. In several years, but there was, for many times, there were three storms, the Mother's Day flood, and two after that, where I got pretty much flooded out, the water went into the adjacent parking lot, and eventually flowed around the end of the building, and fortunately, it went into my barn, but it didn't go into my house, thank goodness. To solve the problem, DPW requested an easement, where they put in a, I don't know if you call it a catch basin, or a storm drain on my property, which took some of that water that came from the adjacent properties, the one we're talking about, and it comes down through and drains onto my property, and went into this catch basin. Yep, I don't get it flooded out in the barn anymore, but just a sufficient amount of rainfall, that does pond there. I didn't bring any pictures with me, but I could go find somewhere I took pictures, and it substantially ponds.
Okay, I'm not familiar with the situation, I'll look into it.
And also part of the area that they want to work at, there's a, there's a sewer easement that goes across part of their property, and then across part of my property, there's a former catch basin that's been filled with concrete there, right near where your map or your diagram shows two boulders, well, there's only one boulder there. Overall, as far as being located next to the tenants, or, I've never had any problem there, my biggest concern right now is I don't see the reason for the additional parking. I realize they're here dealing with a conservation easement, or something like that, that I'm not familiar with, I don't know, like, because they're within fifty to a hundred feet of a wetland area, I guess. So I'm just saying that I foresee probably, I don't foresee the issues that I have now getting fixed, and they've existed ever since the property became a professional building many, many years ago.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to speak at the public hearing tonight?
Good evening. I'm Mike Gilhouse, live at ninety-five South Mass, the other side of the property in question. Overall, I, we met with a representative from that group, no one in this room, but we've never had any issues with them as a neighbor, let's say, like a different neighbors, so, not necessarily speaking against it, just have a few things. I'm just going to use this quick draw, and in this corner, there is a drain, it's a dry well, and when, we met out there, we spoke about that, and they assured me they're going to bring it back to life. This area does pitch this way, does flow across our property, and back when Brad talked about Mother's Day and all that, actually, it's probably the one after, the year after, it was oh-six, probably the worst there, but I think we're, that's been addressed, I mean, Mother's Day floods are Mother's Day floods, but I mean, from most issues, we'd get that drain in the corner operating, that'd be a help. I don't know what happens over in this area, Brad lives there, he's very familiar, I know snow gets stuffed over here, I know occasionally have hauled snow away over the years, we've lived there about twenty-nine years, so I'm going by a little bit of history, but not as long as Brad. Just an observation from traffic, school traffic, we live in, in it, that's the worst of it during the day, you come home and you kind of deal with getting through all that, but they're generally not open, maybe blood work in the morning, but I don't know, like a change of the use, we don't normally see any major issue with that, it's just gobs down traffic that time of day, and I'm not sure that's going to change. Answer, maybe another question, there was floating around about the work in the road, unofficially, let's just say when school's out, it could happen anytime, hopefully earlier rather than later, so that we're back out of there before school starts out, time does seem to slip away in the summertime pretty quick, and I know Brad mentioned some drainage issues, we have discussions about trying to solve some of those while we're there, and it won't be pervious pavement, I hate to tell you that, but anyways.
Thank you.
Can I ask Mike a question?
Oh, no, I don't think so, Mike's here for public comment, he's not here to answer questions.
Well, it has to do.
I just said, you cannot ask questions at public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. You want to talk to Mike, you can talk to him outside in the hallway.
Well, it has to do with the plan.
Mike's not here in official capacity, Scott is here to talk to the plan in official capacity.
It has nothing to do with Scott.
It's to do with him as a brother, we can. Go ahead, then, just overwhelm me, I don't really care.
There's a note on this plan with, where the lot line seems to overlap, there seems to be two pins.
Yes.
Is that an issue, or is?
I don't know yet, I've never, I've just recently heard of this. We've always, this property, our property, the other way on, it was all one owner at the time.
Oh, okay.
This pin was always the pin, apparently there's one eighteen inches down that we've discovered suddenly.
Okay.
I hear there's a solution.
So you're aware of it, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nobody's talking about cutting down the shrubs yet, so we're not a panic.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of it.
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
But, again, I just, the drainage over here, I think it's great they're trying to do something up this other end, not on this sheet, it all have it. And I, you know, the grades are the grades, there's only so much they're going to do to get the water that doesn't go into the front into, into the system, and like I said, they've always been, I think, very good neighbors, but then again, I'm not dealing with whatever issues might be happening on the other side of the property, so I want.
Thanks.
Depending sides out, if you can get that drain maybe spelled out right here, I'd feel more comfortable. Thank you.
Board members? Barbara, please.
Is there a maintenance issue with the drainage on the site? As it's proposed?
Not on the site that I'm aware of, there's definitely some issues on Mass Road that we're trying to solve, and it has a lot to do with the pervious pavement unraveling and creating issues.
Well, I just note that on our report, it, there's a comment that says it's unclear how the twin pipe stormwater storage can be maintained.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant existing maintenance, no, I, there, I'm, it's a little unclear how they plan to maintain that, that twin pipe system in the future.
Well, I'm just bringing it up, because based on the butter comment, and where this pipe is located, that would appear to be pretty key.
Yeah, and there's, there's, there's ways to solve the problem, which they're very capable of doing, as long as they address the comment.
Okay.
Could you ask them comment about an oil and gas hood in that first structure that's going to go in there?
I don't believe I did, but I thought there.
Well, it should be, because we don't.
I thought there was one included.
If it's included, that's fine, but there should be an oil and gas hood in that new structure.
I thought there was a detail for that.
We'll let Matt speak to that when he steps up again.
There is, it's on sheet seven of eight, in the top left corner.
Okay, good. Board members, any other questions for staff before we drag the applicants back up?
So, so, it was originally built, I assume there's a pervious strip of pavement that went down the middle, the travel portion, and then the parking stalls were in pervious, or not?
I don't know.
No, the pervious pavement is on Mass Road, it was the shoulders on Mass Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay, thank you. So let's talk about waivers before we ask them back up, they've asked for a waiver for the.
Close the public hearing.
Want to talk about waivers first, or no?
Close the public hearing.
Thank you very much, I want to close the public hearing. Thank you, Barbara. So we have waivers to discuss as board members, we have a section two dot E dot two dot D three F traffic study, do we feel we need a traffic study for this site? Someone either needs to make a motion, do they have to make affirmative statements, Joanne, in regards to waivers, do we just act on the waivers as requested?
No, there's a waiver.
Well, if you have a question, they can certainly answer it.
Okay, we talked about the traffic study with.
And we put in waiver requests that are in the package.
Okay, I have to find them. We have DPW comments on the waiver requests.
That each Nordstrom has provided in their packet with start, which starts with the letter on April eighth, maybe seven pages in itself, it's just pages on its number, there's another letter.
There it is, got it.
Which deals with the waivers.
All right, so we'll take, we'll discuss the first waiver, DPW comment, or in our packet, could you state, read it, do you have it with you?
I have the comment, sure.
Go ahead, could you let us know what your comment is on the waiver request?
Sure, so, the first waiver request was for the traffic study, and since they weren't changing use, we don't believe the traffic study is necessary as they're requesting, as they're requesting to waive it, for the bioretention system, since they're underground.
We're going to do them one at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we'll take them one at a time.
Yeah, we're going to do them one at a time, if you're ready, I'll make a motion that we waive the requirement for traffic impact study since the change in use is not, the use is not changing.
Second. And with you, David?
Yes.
Motion been made by Colas, seconded by David, to waive the traffic study as requested, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Second motion is to waive the bioretention area, and I'll ask DPW to speak.
So, DPW recommends the, accepting the waiver request, based on the fact that they're providing adequate treatment with the subsurface system that they're showing, as long as it meets the maintenance requirement comments that we provided elsewhere in the packet.
So, if we were going to make a motion to waive, it would be with that condition as part of the waiver, so I'd make that motion based upon Scott's presentation, subject to.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
How long does it take to let?
So, there's another comment, there's some maintenance issues with the design, so as long as those are addressed.
So, they're going to address to the satisfaction.
So, before we vote on the bioretention decision, I want to bring up the subject of the dry well that is non-functional in the upper corner of the property, and I'd like the applicant to make an affirmative statement as to their intention with the dry well.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, when I was out on site there, it's obvious, it's a low point there, we did not see a leaching catch basin, but it could be paved under, is what we believe at this point here, but we will fix that and put it on the plans.
What are you going to do, tell us what you're going to do?
That would be another leaching catch basin, we put in a new leaching catch basin, wrapped in stone at that point there.
And will you make some determination on, as the amount of flow that's going to that, so you could size it correctly?
Yes, it'll be modeled.
It'll be in our hydrocaden model, sir.
Okay, so, Jim, could you add, would you amend your motion to include the re.
So amended.
Re-installed, new, properly sized leaching catch basin in the, in the upper corner of the property? And, Cola, did you, who seconded that one, Cola?
Yes.
All those in favor of granting the waiver for the bioretention with the addition of the leaching catch basin being restored and replaced, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? And the last one is, really not a DPW comment, but they did, oh, they have no comment, perfect.
Yeah, no, I did.
So, motion, the request is to waive the landscaping requirement and screening plan. Joanne, do you have any comments on this?
No, here's a picture of, from two thousand nineteen of what the building, there's some sure landscaping on site.
Is the building in compliance with the original plan in regards to the plantings that were required when that building was approved?
I don't know, I'd have to check that.
Well, I think that's the emotion that we need to look at. So if we discuss granting the waiver for additional landscaping, I think we should enforce what was required under the original approval, and if it's dead, dying, or missing, they have to restore it to the original plan.
We've got no issues with that, Mr. Chairman.
So, everyone heard what I said, somebody want to make a motion?
I want to make a comment.
I have a question on landscaping.
Barbara was first.
I, I obviously don't, we don't have the original plan, so we don't know, but we are now putting, as to abutters, we are making a change on the westerly side in removing a lot of green space and adding parking spaces.
Okay.
And that appears also to be an area that has the drainage issue, albeit maybe an abutting property, so I can't tell from Joanne's picture what, if any landscaping is there, the abutter on the east side talked about, they have shrubs between them, which has been there for a while, and adequate and a good neighbor, so, and I also have a question as to whether or not the original landscaping would be appropriate, given that we're now stacking more parking on the Mass Road side, and I need to tell you, it was, that was an issue when this parking plan was originally approved.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, so why wouldn't we just make it a condition of the approval that it has to meet our landscaping requirements, as they are today? Sufficient, sufficient, if not?
Could I make a, could I ask that maybe that get held to, I know we're going to continue this to the June hearing, based on some of the comments there, I'd like to put some screening along that west side, but I'd like to see what the regulations are, if, just because I'm not sure what the numbers are on site right now, Colas, so when you say make it to that, let me just, we're probably pretty close, but I'd rather we could hold off on that one to the next hearing, and I could do some screening along the west side.
Well, you've got to deal with snow storage.
See if I can find the plan, Mr. Chairman, of the old building, to see what was not, because as Barbara did bring up, the landscape area that we're taking out, I can't meet that, so to just say that we could meet it would be a little, so I think that one there, I could get a little more information, come back, that would help us.
Okay.
So, we're going to hold off on the waiver request for the landscaping?
I have a question on landscaping again. On the west side, you show proposed snow storage, the entire length of the abutters line, do you affirm that when that pile of snow melts, which way is it going to flow?
Well, I think based on our comments, we had already, tonight, that's going to be removed off the plan, so they, they did not want us to be putting the snow storage against his property, so the next plan you see will not have that there.
Well, at a minimum, not on his property, based on the.
That's not there.
Abutters comment.
On your grading on that side of the parking lot, Matt, does that, is there an apex in the grade between the neighbor's property forty, thirty, forty-six, and your proposal, or does that parking lot slope in that direction at that point?
If I may, there is a point, there's a high point somewhere in there, it's not shown on this plan, it's not, it's too flat there, but yes, there is a high point where some of it slopes towards the abutters lot, some of it slopes towards the parking lot.
I'd like to suggest you consider putting a curb on that side, and direct all your stormwater into your parking lot.
Or maybe berm with, either way to get.
Well, I didn't mean granite curving, I meant a berm or asphalt curving of some kind, just something to.
Well, I'm saying even if the grass goes up two feet there, and everything's draining back to our side.
Just as long as you're keeping your stormwater on your pavement.
Yeah, it looks like there's a low point right in the middle that's kind of funneling it to, so I was going to fill that in.
So that would be good.
Put some landscape on it.
All right, so, are you, does any other board members have anything for the applicants at this point, do we need to do anything else tonight? Do we need to do anything else tonight?
Question, sorry. Lighting, I noticed that there's a proposed light in the new parking outside the side of the building. My guess is that's probably going to be employee parking. Are there any other issues with lighting with this site, Joanne? Because I know this site was developed before our lighting rates.
We, this site was approved many years ago, so we don't have all the details that we have for today. But I was curious about where, we don't have any details on that proposed light, so I was curious about, thinking they should provide some details to make sure that it's not causing, you know-
Night sky infiltration.
And also, like, towards the, you know, the abutter, towards the road, like, we just need to know more about it.
It'll be a dark star light, but we'll put a detail in there.
Well, if I can further, because one of the questions I asked about it is, it's clearly a building mount, but you've got those four spaces over in the corner there, so I don't know whether you're, and I didn't see any, I didn't find any other lighting notation, I might have missed it. So I'm just trying to understand what you're proposing to do in light of the fact that you have abutters right there.
So when you come back with your final plan, you'll have, probably have a chance to talk with DPW about their timing for Mass Road, and you can affirm which direction you're going with the driveway entrances, if you are definitively leaving them, or you're definitively widening them?
Absolutely.
So that when the final plan is decided, it's black and white.
I just, just today, the principal, John Stark, sent me an email that the last day of school is June 17th, which I think might be the earliest I've ever seen it in 20 years of raising my kids here, so we have a very short window, but we'll, we'll get back to you and we'll see what we can do.
And well, DPW's timing is the other part of it, so if you can work with them, maybe you do want to modify them, maybe you don't. Let us know at the next meeting.
Yep. We're explaining.
Anything else from board members?
Do you have any comments, Scott?
No, I think my comments were pretty straightforward. I don't know if you want me to go through them all, or at this point.
Not really.
Okay. I figured that was probably the answer.
Do we, do we want a stormwater maintenance agreement with these folks, or is that something you'd like to avoid?
Well, that was part of the waiver. That was a condition of the waiver.
Yes.
On the bioretention.
I didn't read it in the request for the waiver.
No, it made it as part of the motion.
You made it part of the motion, okay. Well, then that works for me.
We did submit one.
Yeah, we have.
It's on file.
That inspection notice of stormwater.
That says that it already submitted one.
We had no comments from fire or police that are relevant, Joanne?
Uh, no.
I'm trying to look through it quickly.
We had some comments from fire.
Fire was a snow storage, was there a big one?
Yeah, there really wasn't fire.
They also mentioned the dumpster.
And we're not requiring any sort of funds to be placed for inspection purposes or anything?
I thought we did.
Okay, I'm asking, but I'm, I can't read everything here.
I don't see it on the list, but-
Some kind of escrow account be established?
Well, yeah, it's number 15 on your thing. Site inspection by-
All right, thank you.
Paper by the owner.
And what I don't see, unless I'm not getting it here, we like to see an as-built drawing of the property when it's completed for final approval. In other words, approve that it was built in compliance with the-
Do you do that for payment?
Well, they're adding to the payment, they're reconfiguring the parking lot.
Yeah, but number 12 is asking for the digital as-bills, is that sufficient?
Well, that's fine, as long as we have an as-built file.
Yeah, number 12 asks for a digital-
Number 12, perfect.
It says as-built.
All right, anything else from this board, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
What date, Matt, how much time do you need, Matt?
I think you said June 9th. I don't want to be here at the next one, you said you had three, no, no.
Okay, Barbara made a motion to continue to June 9th, right, a second?
Second.
No, it's a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, passes. Thank you, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Pete, it's Pete, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Pete.
Good job.
All right, any other business, or we motion to adjourn?
We have to get out of here by 9:00.
Well, that was what we were hoping for.
I'll stop and adjourn. Misses Cole, medium, by the way.
Well, no, nobody else has any more business for the board, I'm not trying to-
So you said Hawks Motorsport, was it on June, May 26th, but we have three others?
We have three others. So Hawks, we're still waiting for an opinion from the town attorney regarding whether or not they have fronted.
Okay.
Because of the rail trail and the town property. So we have the corner of Elm and Maple, a subdivision for two lots, that's the Boeschmann property.
That's interesting, it's being advertised as two lots already.
We have the, Elm Street, the owners, it's a family company, sort of, the owners are the Barnards, it's on Elm Street, and they're looking to just clean up some lines so that the properties have the proper setbacks as best as possible. That's more for long-term planning purposes for their estate. And then we have one other one.
Kilton Barnard?
Oh, Heald Street, no, no, so, Barnard. We have Heald Street, that's also Joe Boeschmann, looking to do a two-lot subdivision on the corner of Sane's Drive and Heald Street.
Okay.
Can I ask one question before you adjourn?
Yep.
The finance director had brought to my attention a few weeks ago that our impact fees have not been adjusted or even, you know-
Reviewed. They're supposed to every so many years.
In many, many years, I think it was 2012, maybe. And so I was going to spend some time looking to see how the report was set up and what the formula was that was suggested, so are you interested in looking at that?
No.
Yeah, well, let's give you one on it.
We can talk about our waiver, we waived our school fees for the, some of these projects for the, for the over 55, and it turns out they don't actually have to be over 55 to live in there. We're going to review that information as well one of these days. But percentage-wise, they don't have to all be over 55.
Right.
Yet we waived all the impact fees for the whole project.
I think the one thing we did waive, there was a stipulation that everyone had to be 55 and older.
But doesn't state law or something preclude that?
But that was an agreement.
I should do that on our waiver, if we want to waive it.
The applicant actually brought it forward.
So Phil's not here, who's going to make the motion?
I already did.
Jim already tried.
Barbara did, and who seconded it?
No, Jim tried, made it, I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, adjourned. Does anybody have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, it is 9:8:59, we are-